Ready down there, folks? Ready. I'm ready. Brian, you ready? The time is 6:00 PM and the regular meeting of the Denison City Council is now in session. Our invocation this evening will be brought to us by Jeff Humphrey, Pastor of Parkside Baptist Church.
Let's pray. Lord, thank you for the great privilege we have to live in this great city called Denison. Lord, we know that there are many things that cities are known for, but Lord, what makes a city is its people. And right now, so many of our people, Lord, are grieving and dealing with this great pandemic that has come over us. Lord, we pray for our mayor and her family as they are grieving, as well as many others of our people who are also grieving loss and grieving being kept up and put up and shut up in their homes, Lord. We pray that you would remove this as quick as possible so we can get back to doing the things that we love to do with you and for you, Lord, in this city. Lord, we thank you for these men and women that make up our city council, Lord, that are in a beautiful position to help us to make the most of this moment, as confining as it may seem, but also in this moment, help us to do the things that are going to make us ready for a new day when the wind begins to blow again and that we can make the most of it as soon as it comes, Lord. So again, give them wisdom, give them courage, Lord. Give them the ability to represent us, your people, in this place. And thank you for being with us in all that we do. Thank you so much for this city again. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance this evening will be led by our own Police Chief Mike Gudjel.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
This evening, the first thing on our agenda is employee years of service recognition. We are very fortunate as a community to have a team that has longevity and to be part of an organization that recognizes that our team members are our greatest asset. And so, we would like to take the opportunity to recognize some who have achieved some significant milestones, starting with five years, going right on up to 25 years. So if City Manager Bobby Atterbury and Amy Lay will join me, we will go to the front and we will recognize these folks. Now, under normal circumstances, we'd be doing lots of hugging and shaking of hands and so forth, but tonight, we'll just be telling you how much we really, really appreciate you and the day is going to come when we can hug and shake hands again, so.
Last try.
Spread out a little bit. There's some social distance in Frank.
Social distance.
Okay, next is a senior year of service. Donna Della. Long as he's here. Jill Evans. And next is 15 years of service. Malvin. I'm here. All right, we'll see if he gets to the board. Mark Esteban. Thank you, Mark. Let's do it all over. All right, and the last serving, I'll need you 20 years of service, Jamie Muller. Is that a good year? Okay. All right, that's it. Thank you all.
Show us the picture.
At this point in each council meeting, there is time set aside that citizens may speak on action items listed on the agenda. Ms. Wallantine, do we have any requests to speak cards? No one has requested to speak, so therefore, we will have no public comments. Item four, the consent agenda.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as written.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Doty and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 5A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and receive testimony from the Neighborhood Services Manager on the unsafe condition of the posted structure at 311 West Morton and take action. Mr. Lay.
Okay, Mayor, Council, good to see everyone. On December 21st, 2020, Texoma Family Shelter, John S. Lopez Estate, and Carol Lopez were given notice of violation to repair or demolish the structure at 311 West Morton. Owners failed to comply with the notice. The structure is unsafe in accordance with Chapter 13, Article 7, Section 13, 154 H, M, N, and O of the Denison Code of Ordinances. So you see it in the picture. The house really doesn't look that bad from the front, but has a hole in the roof about the size of a small car there. Staff executed an administrative search warrant on February 19th, 2020 to confirm health and safety violations within the structure, which were confirmed with that search warrant. The appraised value of the structure was $40,140 in 2020. The taxes currently owed totaled $3,671.83 have not been paid in full since 2017. There's been no active water service at the structure since April 30th, 2019. The structure is a nuisance in the neighborhood. The structure is not weather tight. The roof is obviously in poor condition and the house is not fit for habitation. There's a record of violations, notices, and unsafe condition of the property on file in the Co-Compliance Division. Staff is requesting Council to declare the structure unsafe and order its removal. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Lay. Discussion from Council. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. A motion?
Mayor, I move to declare the structure at 311 West Morton a nuisance and unsafe to order demolition and to authorize staff to proceed with the demolition process.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Hander and a second by Councilmember Greenleaf. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Lay. Item 5B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance establishing a conditional use permit for the expanded use of a storage facility for closets and garages located at 2901 West Morton, Denison, Texas, case number 2020-064CUP. Mr. Medina.
Thank you and good evening. This is case number 2020-064CUP. The property is located within the Highway Oriented and Corridor District. It's zoned commercial. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval on the 8th of December, 2020. City staff also recommends approval. This is the subject property here outlined in yellow. As you can see, to the south and east of the yellow, within the yellow boundary, is the existing storage facility. The applicant simply wishing to move forward with what would be phased to expand the existing use. However, this does require not only a conditional use permit, does require the applicant to plat the property, which the plat is going before Planning and Zoning Commission next week, as well as a site plan and civil engineering plans. So if you look at your motion here, you'll see that we're recommending approval, pending final review and approval of the site plan and the civil engineering plans and the plat as well. Speaking with the engineer, Mr. David Vilbig, we should accept or we should anticipate revised submittals of the site plan and engineering plans sometime next week. The first iteration of those plans are included in your packet for reference. Here's the zoning. As you can see, the dark purple is zoned commercial. And for reference, this is the proposed site plan. As a reminder, we're not approving the site plan tonight. I just felt like it'd be appropriate to show you kind of how the project would be expanding. So you can see that it's a little difficult to read, but they're putting storage buildings along basically the edge of the property. So that way, we have adequate fire suppression lane throughout the whole facility and adequate traffic flow as well. So no loading or unloading will take place off-site. Looking at the site plan, there's adequate room for any kind of loading vehicles and vehicle storage and that sorts. As mentioned, it is located within the highway overlay, so it is required that the property does meet 100% stone masonry on the facade. So this would be the side facing the property from Morton. So again, we'll review then finalize the elevations in site plan by Planning and Zoning Commission. So I'm present for any questions that you may have, and staff does recommend approval.
Questions for Mr. Medina. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from Council. A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance establishing a conditional use permit of the subject property pending final site plan, plat, and civil engineering plan approval.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Adams and a second by Councilmember Hander. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5C, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance amending Article III Zoning Districts, Section 21, 28-39, Central Area District, Article III Zoning Districts, Section 28.47, Commercial Historic Overlay District, Article IV Use Regulations, Section 28.49, Use Regulations in Article VI Definitions, Section 28.63.1, Definitions to Establish Regulations to Define and Regulate Mobile Food Units. Mr. Medina, that was a mouthful.
Sorry about that. Okay, here we go. So this ordinance or this public hearing is to amend the existing mobile food ordinance. We worked really closely with Ms. Wallantine. She worked on amending Chapter 15, which is the actual mobile food ordinance. However, there are components of it that take place and exist and live within the zoning ordinance. So we wanted to make sure that we did that together and that we all did it holistically. That included working closely with Grayson County, various other departments such as the Building Official, Mr. Robert Lay's group, the Clerk's Office. So just to run through some of the changes that we're proposing, basically, the market has shifted in a way where mobile vendors are becoming more and more prominent. There's a lot more interest in them, especially in Denison in the past few years. So we wanted to ensure that our zoning ordinance was compatible with that growth that we're seeing. So in our current ordinance, a mobile food unit isn't really defined too well. It isn't defined at all in the zoning ordinance. And there's no section that indicates where they'd be permitted, right? So in this table here, we're showing what we're proposing the changes to be, where we would allow mobile food units in office districts, local retail, commercial, central area. Does require a conditional use permit. In some of the other industrial areas, we would allow a unit as well. We think it's appropriate that somebody might want to go set up on a work site and serve the employees there. Just a little bit more detail, we wanted to provide some flexibility to those that operate food units, mobile food units, so they would be able to come into our offices, say, "I have this truck. I want to operate in these locations, X, Y, and Z." You know, we would then review and ensure that those are within these zoning districts, and then they'd have the capacity to kind of bounce around wherever they would like as opposed to being locked into one specific address. So I'm present for any questions that you may have. We recommend approval and the Planning and Zoning Commission, I'm sorry, did recommend approval on December 8th as well.
Questions for Mr. Medina. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from Council. A motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt the proposed amendments to the Denison Municipal Code, Chapter 28.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Hander and a second by Councilmember Greenleaf. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Medina. Item 6A, receive a report and hold a discussion regarding the Coronavirus Relief Fund, Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, better known as the CARES Act. Reimbursement request provided through the Texas Division of Emergency Management. Ms. Bowlin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm excited to stand before you to present an update on the Coronavirus Relief Fund CARES Act project. The predetermined allocation for the City of Denison was $1.4 million. The initial distribution in the amount of $281,941 was received on June 3rd of last year, leaving an available allocation for further eligible expenses of $1.1 million. At the onset of the public health emergency, staff implemented safety mitigation efforts to ensure the best protocols and measures were put into place at the most appropriate time. Staff were called on to act in unprecedented roles and as Team Denison always shines brightest in uncertain times, staff stepped up and took on the challenges with great finesse. As you will see in the fund breakdown, the City of Denison has received the total reimbursement funds allocated for the mitigation efforts. Upon being notified of the CARES Act funding, staff went to work on analyzing the greatest needs in our city and developing strategies that would best utilize the funding. Some of the priority projects included automatic doors for touchless entry and exit at our senior center and our aquatics facility, a UV sanitation system for enhanced sanitation of the public pool and the water treatment services, a digital message board for improved communication of safety measures at the aquatics facility, laptops, hotspots, and teleconference software for improved work-from-home resources, automatic flushing stations and wastewater testing equipment, electronic sprayers for cleaning and sanitation of police vehicles and equipment, and a walk-in freezer for the Meals on Wheels operations at the senior center. Partnership opportunities for community economic support was another vital piece of the CARES Act funding. Staff developed a community partnership with the school district to support the purchase of laptops and hotspots for disadvantaged students to accommodate technology demands resulting from the mitigation efforts of the public health emergency. Through the CARES Act, the city has partnered to provide a 25% match to bridge a financial gap to secure the success of Operation Connectivity with the Denison ISD. The City of Denison, under direction of Resolution Number 4010 passed on June 26th of 2020, allocated up to $150,000 for the Individual and Family Assistance Program through the CARES Act. Staff reached out to several local organizations and churches to determine which groups would receive dispersments to aid Denison residents. There were six nonprofit organizations and churches selected based on their current established procedures for distributing financial resources. On July 10th, the initial disbursement of $50,000 was issued with additional dispersments to follow. Each organization was instructed to keep detailed records of applications, documentation, and dispersments of the finances. There have been more than 70 households that have received funding to assist with rent or mortgage payments, utility bills, and emergency expenses with a total disbursement of more than $75,000. The CARES Act funding is a reimbursement grant that requires city funds to be expensed prior to receiving the allocated money. The reimbursement process was a long and complex process that required many hours and detailed paperwork to justify the expenditures as being related to COVID-19 medication efforts to qualify for the CARES Act funds. As you can see in this breakdown, staff submitted invoices and payroll expenses directly related to COVID-19 medication efforts that far exceeded the allocation set aside for the City of Denison. The Texas Division of Emergency Management has approved and released the total allocation that was set aside for the $1.4 million. All expenditures that were submitted that exceeded the justification of the $1.4 million allocated have been placed in a holding status for consideration should any additional funding be made available through additional Coronavirus Relief Fund legislation in the near future. At that time, these expenditures would be taken off of the hold status and reviewed for further funding approval. I would like to take this time to say what an honor and privilege it has been to take on the task of procuring and administering the Coronavirus Relief Fund CARES Act funds for the City of Denison and her citizens. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So, Ms. Bowlin, would you back up to the previous line? Okay, there. So, the balance at the bottom.
Yes.
That's in addition to the $1.4?
So you could say that I went into panic mode and it was such a long process to get everything approved that I threw everything but the kitchen sink at them.
Anything that it was possible that I discovered, right?
That was possible to get approved. And so the end result is that we submitted more than enough to justify our $1.4 million to get our $1.4 million sent to us. So this is what is in excess. This is what we have already spent, but it qualifies under the parameters of the funding so that if Congress were to approve additional funding, this would automatically be taken off of hold and reviewed for future payments.
So it's just sitting there, ready and available? And as soon as they sign on the dotted line or they quit arguing and pass a bill, well then...
Then we should be ahead of the game.
...is there that could be approved?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Questions for Ms. Bowlin?
You did a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Kimberly. That couldn't have been an easy task, but certainly a rewarding one because your efforts certainly paid off, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. That is information item only. Does not require action from the Council. Project, Item 6B, receive a report and hold a discussion regarding Code Compliance Division updates. Mr. Lay.
Okay, it's always a privilege to get to come up and speak about the activities that are going on in Co-Compliance and share some of the work that they're doing. You know, the work that they do is so important in the city. And it's a tough job and they, our staff does it with a smile on their face and it's a privilege to get to work with them for sure. I want to share with you some of the successes that they've had in 2020 first, you know, because you might not, if you don't get across town, you might not see some of these things. So I'm going to share a few of our minimum property standard successes again. One thing all these had in common, and I lumped this as a group, is when we originally started working these cases for minimum property standards, we were working with a different, or the original owner. And through this process, they realized we can't do all the work that we need to do and they ended up selling the property. Now, all of this was either vacant property, so no one was not owner occupied or anything. So, but through the process, again, these properties did sell and the new owners jumped right in and come up with some really beautiful homes in the city, invested a lot of money. So first one here, I just want to show you pictures, 609 East Morton. You can see that didn't look too good and it turned into this property now. So that one was the result of a proactive minimum property standards case because there are two brand-new builds next to this house. So last year, when we talked about some of our priorities, getting into neighborhoods where there's redevelopment, led to us working this house particularly. The next one's 924 West Chestnut. This house didn't really need a lot of work, but it'll go a long way to show you what just a little bit of woodworking and paint will do and a new roof will do to a house. So you can go from that to that and it makes an impact in a neighborhood. This at 1200 West Johnson was a vacant house that had been, had caught on fire. It didn't burn to the ground, obviously, but then the owner of the house could not afford to do anything with it. So as we worked through this process with them, they realized, okay, we've got to sell this house. And an investor came in and turned it around and turned it into something that the community can be proud of in a neighborhood. And last, this is my favorite remodel that I've seen in Denison lately. This one was another priority target area. It's across the street from Maze Elementary School, 308 Jenny. So they turned this house into this one. I just love the way it turned out, the color scheme and such. So these were all successes that originated in code through minimum property standards. So again, just wanted to share those because if you don't get to drive through the town, you might not ever see those or understand how they came to be what they are. So talking about 2020 in review. So, you know, we've mentioned the word COVID here a lot of times. So COVID definitely affected the code department. We essentially shut down, not totally, but worked at minimum staffing levels or just kind of backed way off for about two and a half months. So that kind of plays with, you know, total numbers and such. So that kind of plays with, you know, total numbers and such. So it's really hard to give a good trend of where we were going because twenty twenty and COVID kind of messed with our numbers. So I'll kind of share just a few highlights of those. If you add those up, the Code Compliance officers worked just over fifty-six hundred code cases in the city last year. In twenty nineteen, we were just over seven thousand. So when you start talking about taking off two and a half months, that makes up for a lot of those numbers. A couple of things that stand out, our complaints worked last year were six hundred and twenty-six. That number was down from the year before. I would love to see that number continue to trend down. That means people aren't complaining, there's not as much out there to complain about. So hopefully, that trend will continue. Our biggest code violation, it's this way in all cities, is high grassways, just simply folks that you got to tell them, hey, you got to maintain your property, you got to maintain your lawn. It's always going to be the biggest. We want to figure out ways all to chip away at that number. It did actually drop last year a little bit, but still, twenty-six hundred code violations is a lot in one category. So, and the hundred and sixty-two represented up there are right-of-ways that had to be Last on here to point out is minimum property standards, we worked a hundred and seventy-three of those, a hundred, yes, a hundred and seventy-three, a hundred and forty-six of those were completed. You know, sometimes they're not as nearly as impactful as the pictures I showed you. Sometimes it's a lot smaller, but we did complete that many. Just a couple of other facts of note here. We cleared a hundred and sixty-seven liens, mowing liens off the books last year, totaling almost ninety thousand dollars. And then substandard structures, we were able to demolish twenty-seven substandard structures in twenty twenty. Okay, so moving forward, when we got together as a staff and we started talking about what's our focus, how are we going to work minimum property standards in twenty twenty-one, we didn't see the need to deviate much from what we've been doing. You know, neighborhoods with the current redevelopment, an ongoing redevelopment, that's still happening. We had, you know, a hundred and seventy-some-odd homes built in Denison last year, many of those in the infill area, so we still see that as a priority place to be getting out into the neighborhoods. High-visibility corridors and any other high-visibility area, talking about that as main thoroughfares through the city, around our schools and around our parks. My thought has been with that always, and I've talked about this for a few years, is when a visitor comes into Denison, what are they going to drive and see? They're going to visit those parks, they're going to visit our schools, they're going to decide, do I want to open my business here, do I want to move my family here? These are ways with Denison can put their best foot forward, so we're going to continue to make those a priority. And lastly, for a couple of years, we've been working with Historic Downtown. We still have a handful of projects going on downtown, but have made a ton of progress in a couple of years, so we'll continue to work those and try to wrap those all up this year, hopefully. And so the rental registration inspection program kicked off today. We have got to get that advertised really well, get the momentum back that we lost when COVID, you know, delayed us. So we'll, we'll be advertising for that through the year, and hopefully, we can get the, again, get that momentum back from what I thought we had built up back last summer So as we continue to move forward, staff's always looking for ways to find things that would be impactful, ways to improve the city. So as staff has discussed this in the past couple of months, we have come to realize that commercial properties on some of our main thoroughfares need to be addressed. It's something that has needed to be done for a few years. It will be quite a task to tackle, but we've recognized that specifically automotive repair, automotive sales, and tire shops and other small repair shops stand out in some of our main thoroughfares that's needing addressing. So there's going to be a group of us, we'll work through this this year. It's something I figure will take some time, it'll take months, it's not something that we're just going to send a notice to them and then it's going to fix itself overnight. Some of the things we're looking for are, do they have a CO for their building? Is their zoning correct? Do they have a CUP to operate what they're operating? Are their screening requirements proper? You'd be amazed at just what proper screening will do to make things look better. So we intend to visit with these folks individually, bring the team together that we need between planning and zoning and building and myself, and work with these folks through the months to hopefully get them all into compliance and help turn some of those, some of those businesses around to where they look a little bit better. There's a couple of examples here of a, this is supposed to be a used car sales, and you can see the accumulation that's built up over the years. And another on a main thoroughfare where is the use correct? Can they store cars on the property? So these are things we need to work with these property owners and get to get fixed. So last, anytime I get to talk to a group, I always give the two perspectives of Denison. The first one is if you've lived here for a long time, that you know we've come a long ways. And if you, but if you visit here or you just moved here, you know that we still have a long ways to go. But I can stand up here and say definitely that we're closer to being where we want to be today than we were six months ago or a year ago, for sure. So code department's going to keep working hard and keep chipping away at it, and we'll get there to where we want to be. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Robert, I'm going to back up just slightly. You said we did twenty-seven demolitions this year?
That's how many that I had, yes, ma'am.
How does that, how does that compare to previous years?
So that number is, the number's historically been higher. We've had one year in the past five that it's been lower, but it was kind of an off-year for a number of reasons. But I really believe that that number will continue to slowly decline, not just take a major drop, but we don't have the blighted houses on every street corner that we did ten years ago or even five years ago. So there will still be demolitions to be done. I do not see the day that we're doing thirty and thirty-five a year continuing. We've kind of had these discussions internally about this. A lot of what we did last year, too, were developers that come in and that buy homes that are a little bit blighted, and they ask us to tear it down, and as an incentive to get a new build, if it qualifies as substandard, we'll tear it down for them as an incentive again. So again, yeah, that number's dropped a little bit, but I really see it continuing to just drop slightly every year. But that's a good thing. That means we don't have...
Well, that was what I was hoping that your answer was going to be, that they were continuing to drop because there was not as much need out there.
No, there's not.
For demolitions. So this has been a tremendously successful program.
Yes.
And you know that, that code compliance is high on the priority list of the council.
Yes, ma'am.
And we certainly do, Robert, appreciate you and your team and all that you've done to get us much closer to where, where we want to be. So, so thank you.
Thank you.
For all that effort.
I've got a question for you.
Okay.
My parents always called it the old mattress factory off of Crawford, between Crawford and Owings, over there by Tone. Are we pursuing anything with that property?
So that one is on the radar. We actually were actively working that right when COVID again started, and it kind of fell off the radar a little bit. But we had some initial conversations with the owner of the building, and it definitely was going to get back on the radar this year. So it, no, something needs to be done there. But that's, again, another one of those that that's a big project that will take probably multi-layers to get solved.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Lay?
Good job.
Well, there is no need for an executive session this evening, and there being no further business to come before this body. The time is six thirty-eight, and we stand adjourned.